Good morning, welcome to the April 27th meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If y'all would stand with us please, Commissioner Chip Pinion will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Yep.
Father, we thank you for this day and your love for us and just for the opportunity to come and do business here today. Father, we pray you'd give us, give us the wisdom and the knowledge and understanding we need as we deal with the situation before us today. Father, we can make the decisions that are best in your eyes and best for our county and our citizens. Father, we ask you just to be with our country, be with our state, be with our county and our cities. Father, that you continue to guide our leadership each and every day. Father, we thank you for all that you have blessed us each one with. We thank you today for those things. Father, we ask you to be with our friends and neighbors and our colleagues, Father, that are dealing with sickness, uh, just these times of year. Father, we ask you just to meet their needs when you know what you can. And Father, we love you and we thank you and most of all, for your son Jesus and his mighty praise this day.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Call the roll please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. This time I'll call on our Vice Chair, Mike Kush, for the approval of the April 13th meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have reviewed the minutes and they seem to be in order, so would like to submit those for approval.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries, thank you. Uh, no items withdrawn or deferred.
Correct.
Uh, it looks like we have one item that's been added. Uh, this is a revised agenda. Item nine C, uh, has been added and that's the Verizon, uh, item, so, uh, that's a new item to our agenda. Uh, item six is waiver request. Uh, A, Ms. Teresa T. Chandler is asking for a waiver for an off-site soils easement for property located at 180, uh, Floation Road. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you and good morning Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well and had a good weekend. Uh, this first item before you today is located at the southwest corner of Woodbury Pike and Florington Road. Uh, you can see the image on your monitors before you. Uh, the septic system on this particular property, 180 Florington Road, failed and new soils had to be identified on the adjacent tract over here for them to use for their septic tank. Uh, you can see this is the actual soil area here crossing the property line. Since these tracts are both under five acres, they technically are subdivisions fall under our regulations. Uh, they have had an easement, uh, prepared for this. Since it was an emergency situation, uh, we went ahead and told them they needed, they could go ahead and do the work that they needed to do just to come back for the waiver request, uh, which they have done. Uh, I spoke with the applicant just a few moments ago before the meeting starts, said everything seems to be working fine now, so everything, it, that's, that's good, everything was taken care of. But we just have to take care of this kind of for belts and suspenders. Uh, they will record an easement for both of these tracks so that they know that they'll, both properties will know that there is an easement on both properties. Uh, with that, uh, there really isn't anything else with this. It's not for new development, it was really a situation where the existing tank had failed. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Uh, Ms. Chandler is present as well, if you have any questions for her.
I think the motion's approved.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, do that motion carries. Item seven, submitted for preliminary plan approval. A, Ashberry Road Development. The item number is fifteen dash one zero zero four, twelve lots on six point one five acres zoned RM located along Ashberry Road. Kaywood Builders is the applicant, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Asbury Road. Uh, your agenda, it looks like the printer decided to do something a little different than what I had typed, so I apologize for that. Uh, but they're proposing to create twelve lots on six, a little over six acres. Uh, the subdivision is proposed to be serviced with sanitary sewer from the city of Murfreesboro. Uh, my understanding is this has gone through Murfreesboro Planning Commission and received preliminary plat approval from their jurisdiction. Uh, we are still working through a few items as far as the, uh, the water availability is concerned. After speaking with Consolidated Utility, it's not a matter of if there's water, the water is there, it's just a matter of making sure the fire flows, which regs they have to go by. If they're asking for the sewer, they'd have to go by city regulations, just a matter of what size pipe that they have to install. Uh, but, uh, Ms. Wood is here with C U D, if you have any questions regarding that. Uh, there's a, several items here as well from an engineering standpoint that I'll let, uh, Mr. Hughes address.
And several, several of these items can be, uh, corrected on the construction plans, but just, we wanted to be noted, um, on the front end. Uh, the detention pond berm is partially in the floodway and we need to have it removed. There's plenty of room, ample room to massage that and, and get that out of the floodway. Uh, but we'll need that. Um, another items like, uh, stormwater couts, um, and all proposed contours, um, let's see, lot number six will need to, uh, address some drainage issues. It's potential for a lot of water collecting behind the house, uh, the way the, the existing contours are, we'll need them to address that. Lots nine through twelve will have, uh, access on Asbury Road. Um, they'll need, um, and that is, Asbury Road's a, is a ditch section, we'll need them to size some drainage culverts for that. Um, let's see, um, and, um, just proposed contours on the, on the new Sykes Court Road. So, many of these things are just things that we can address on the construction plans, but I just want them noted that we, will need to be addressed.
Does eight have the option of Asbury Road or the small?
Well, there's a note for lot eight to, um, come in on Sykes and it's, it needs to, uh, the driveway will be next to lot seven, so try to get it away from that intersection as much as they could.
But all in all, we, it's got some tweaking to do, but we can address a lot of these on the construction plans.
Like I say, Mr. Huddleson in the back, if he's nodding his head, he can handle a few problems they've got, y'all can work out. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, the motion carries, thank you. Item eight, submitted for final plat approval. Eight A, Buchanan Estates, Section Six, Phase Four, item number is thirteen dash two zero four six, fifty lots on twenty-seven point twenty-eight acres zoned RM located off Eps Mill Road. Rhodes Development Company is the applicant, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, as you stated, this is, uh, the next section of Buchanan Estates. Uh, the preliminary plat for this was approved some time ago. This has been a subdivision that's been developing for a number of years. Uh, this final plat does appear consistent with the preliminary that was approved. Uh, just a few comments really on this. Most of our comments have been addressed, just a couple of things, uh, that I did want to point out. One of them, and you can see, this is lot four twenty-nine. It's very narrow lot. Uh, they have identified the building envelope on here. I just really want to point that out, that this, as being created like this in this situation, becomes this type of situation where, uh, if they tried to ask for a variance to this because of the, the narrow lot width, that, you know, the board may have, the board of zoning deals may have some issue with that because that'd be a self-created situation at that point because they created a lot that way. Uh, but they, uh, applicant is aware of that. I mean, it's, the part, the part of the problem is you've got this sanitary sewer easement on this side.
And a drainage easement.
And a drainage easement on the, on the other, so, I mean, you'd still have side setback over here, but you're losing a few extra feet here. So, this, it's, it's more narrow than what we would normally see, but just really wanted to point that one out. Uh, beyond that, uh, most of the other comments that we had were pretty much housekeeping and I think the, uh, the applicant will be, address the, uh, other things prior to this being recorded. So, uh, with that, again, this does appear, uh, consistent with the preliminary approval, so we'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions for staff?
You okay, Mike? Yes, sir. It's served by, uh, city sewer. Um, just like Doug said, some minor tweaking, uh, show state plan coordinates and, and little housekeeping issue. But other than that, it's...
Doug, will you, will you elaborate a little more on four twenty-nine?
Yes.
The, the lot width or the...
Well, as far as, I mean, it meets the county requirements. It's just, you know, once you have seventy-five feet right here, of course, along the frontage, when you take off the ten and the fifteen, that's twenty-five, it gives you a fifty-foot building envelope. That, that, that's a little narrow.
I mean, a lot of houseplants can fit in that, it's just, just wanted to note that it's narrow.
Yeah. Really just pointing it out, just so everybody understands more than anything.
Um, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve with all staff comments.
Yes, sir.
And a second.
All the, Mr. Chairman, all the other sections and everything's moving well. Drainage, roads, lots, septic sewers, I mean, everything is clicking right along.
Right, we had to get the, um, some roads repaired, uh, previous septic sewer collapse, but I think they've got that.
Okay, so this section here is gonna total up, what, four, four hundred and something lots, I guess? Four sixty or four?
There's fifty lots in this section, um, yeah, the numbering.
Is this the last section?
No. No, there's, there's a lot more to it than this.
Yeah, they're gonna, keep going back.
There's a lot more land out there.
Okay. I just like to stay on top on each section we're coming in, making sure we, we're good on the ones prior and everything's looking good before we move on to the next.
And with this, like Mike said, this is one of those subdivisions since it's served with sewer from the city, you know, it's subject inspections from both the city and the county.
Right, right.
So, it's, yeah, there's been a lot of oversight on this. Okay, thank you.
I have one other question. On, um, plat note twenty-one, the, it's the areas of these lots that back up to Buzzard Branch? And it talks about how there's no disturbance, um, of the soil and native vegetation and all that, and it looks like that, that area's part of these people's yards. Is that wooded so they won't disturb it?
Well, the, the city of Murfreesboro has two, uh, stream buffers. Uh, one is thirty-five feet that you can't touch from the top of bank and, and another fifteen feet outside of that that you can mow, but they want it to stay green.
Okay, I just want to make sure there's some natural barrier, some kind of barrier where they don't realize they're cutting all the way to the end.
Yes, they have, that's the, the city of Murfreesboro's, uh, stream buffer.
Okay. And so, they would, who would be the one to enforce that if there is?
Probably the city, I would think, on that one, just because it's actually their buffer. Buffer, yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious about the water quality. Is it?
Other questions? I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, the motion carries, thank you. Item C, eight C, Eldon Bishop Minor Final Plat. Item number is fifteen dash two zero one seven, one lot on three and a half acres zoned RM located along Barfield Crescent Road. John Bishop is the applicant. Includes a waiver to the fire hydrant location requirements. I understand there's a little bit of a question here.
Yes, sir, there is. Um, we'll discuss this real quick here. Uh, this is a piece of property located along Barfield Crescent Road. You can see he's wanting to subdivide off a little over three and a half acres on the property. When it was originally submitted, there's not a fire hydrant within a thousand feet, but as it turns out, the line in this area can support a hydrant. Uh, as such, we typically would not bring these before you because it's a one-lot subdivision, doesn't need any waivers, uh, we would handle that from an administrative level. After speaking with the applicant's design engineer and surveyor on this property, uh, he seemed to indicate that he thought that the applicant may still want to pursue the waiver just for cost purposes and not be able to afford the cost of installing a fire hydrant. Uh, I'm not sure if anybody's here for this plat, uh, that, that's representing, uh, the applicant on this, but, uh, basically what I told the, uh, the surveyor was that, you know, historically, the planning commission has not granted waivers in cases where the line could support a hydrant. So, I mean, it's his right to ask, but, uh, we wouldn't recommend approval of it. So, with that, I don't know if, if he's even here.
Of course, there could be some neighbors that he might could talk into participating because it would help them out too.
Correct.
Do you need a motion?
I don't think so. I mean, if you're not, I would, I would just make a motion to deny the waiver. The plat, you don't need to, to worry about because, again, that can be handled from an administrative standpoint.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to deny and a second. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we skipped over, uh, eight B there, the Bottom subdivision. If we could go back to that one.
I already got it marked down, yes, we approved it, so. Thank you, Doug.
Maybe I zoned out for a minute there, I don't know, but.
Uh, item eight B, Bottoms subdivision, item number's fifteen dash two zero one one, two lots on five point seven two acres zoned RM located along Spantown Road. Sam and Shirley Bottoms are the applicant. Includes a waiver to the fire hydrant requirements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, as you summed it up pretty well, this is located along Spantown Road. Uh, there's an existing house on track two, they're subdividing that off for another developable lot for lot one. Uh, this is in the Nolansville, uh, utility district. Uh, from the information we've received from the surveyor, it does not appear that a fire hydrant can be supported out in this location. So, uh, they're just asking for a waiver to that provision. Everything else with this plat appears to be in order. Uh, again, typically, one or two lot subdivisions, uh, we can handle administratively, but anything with a waiver does have to come before you for approval. So, uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Make a motion or, oh, go ahead if you...
I was just saying, is there, where is the closest fire hydrant?
Thirty-seven hundred feet.
Oh, here's, yeah, right, right in here, third, the nearest one.
If there's not sufficient water for, now, will they have to sprinkle that house?
No, not with, uh, one or two lot subdivisions, correct.
Under, under a number lot.
Correct. Anything greater than three, three or greater, but not one or two.
I make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Assistant with the, uh, since there's not available water there.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Chip, any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and that motion carries. With done C, I, uh, have about eighty-five or ninety pair of, um, reading glasses and, uh, seeing as how I didn't show up with one, uh, Gail found me a pair to read and still managed to skip one, so. Ready for item eight D.
I got some...
Uh, Nipper, two lots subdivision, minor final plat. Item number is fifteen dash two zero one nine, two lots on three point four acres zoned RM located on Bradiville Pike. Linda Lewis is the applicant. Includes a waiver to the fire hydrant requirements, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this application that we're considering now really is similar to the last one, excepted on a different part of the, of the county. This located along Bradiville Pike, uh, existing house here on the, uh, larger acreage, they're wanting to carve off a little over a half an acre here for lot two. Closest fire hydrant's about eighteen hundred feet, almost nineteen hundred feet away. Uh, there is not the ability though to support a fire hydrant in this location, so they are just asking for a waiver to that provision, uh, in order to, uh, affect their subdivision. So, uh, the applicant is present and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Staff recommendation?
Uh, since there's not a water, uh, since water line in here can't support a hydrant, we'd recommend the approval of that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, that motion carries, thank you. Item eight E, Stillwell, one lot subdivision. The item number is fifteen dash two zero two four, one lot on one point four acres zoned RL located along Williams Road. Josh Stillwell is the applicant. Includes a waiver to the soil site requirements, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property is located on the north side of Williams Road, uh, right to the east of Threet Road. Uh, the applicant is looking to subdivide about one and a half acres off an existing parcel that remain about five, a little over five acres, so this area technically isn't part of the subdivision. Uh, really, the, the plat itself is in pretty good order. The only thing, there's not enough soil on the property to have both the primary and the secondary site, so they're asking for a waiver to the off-site soil provision to have an easement onto this property, the remaining acreage here for their, uh, other septic site. Uh, again, beyond that, this plat appears to be in good order. So, uh, the applicants are present and will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And are they building a house for a family member or something, or they, you know, this isn't a bad thing, in my opinion, to do if it's some, you know, for, if they're just trying to be developers, it's, you know, and, and sell off a lot, it's a little messy having a alternate site, but they're saying it's for a family member or something like that, so, I take it this applicant's right behind you, they're nodding, so.
I hope they're just not saying, any application, sure, yeah, yeah.
Staff recommendation to approve?
Yes, sir, we're fine with this.
So moved. So, staff comments?
I have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, the motion carries, thank you. Item number eight F, Richard Brown, Minor Final Plat. Item number's fifteen dash two zero two five, five lots on four point one five acres zoned RM located along Compton Road. Paul Column is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, this property is located on the south side of Compton Road, just really pretty much at the intersection there of Emery Road. Uh, the applicant's just looking to subdivide the existing property. Uh, there's an existing lot here as well as this right in this area, but they're looking to create a new lot here and these lots right here, a total of five lots is what we're looking at. Uh, as far as, uh, the plat itself, uh, most of the, uh, pretty much all the comments that we've made have been addressed. Uh, no waivers are required for this particular subdivision, uh, it appears to be in order. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is next to something we approved, what, three or four months ago?
Uh, it's a little further down, it's like about, about a month or so ago, but it's a little further down.
Compton Heights.
Yeah. Not immediately adjacent, but same general vicinity.
The three houses that are grouped together on the, yeah, on that side, how are they accessing the two at the bottom of the plat?
They're, these are flag lots. There's a, right here and right here. And they're cross, they're actually providing cross-access easements for lot six. I think they're wanting to share a driveway at some point, which lot six has its own frontage, so they could have their own driveway if they wanted to, but they're providing for cross-access easements between, for five and six.
What are the size of those lots? I can't tell.
Um, looks like about three-quarters of an acre roughly. This one's about a half an acre, let me zoom in a little bit. My eyes aren't as good as they used to be either. Okay, yeah, this one's about half an acre, this one's about three-quarters of an acre, three-quarters of an acre roughly. This one's a little over that, it's a little over an acre as is lot two over here.
Staff have concerns or recommendation?
I have no real concerns. I mean, it appears to meet our requirements.
Motion for?
Second.
A motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? Charlotte, you okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, the motion carries, thank you. Item nine, submitted for site plan approval. Nine A, Bill Rice Ranch School Building, Phase One. Item number is fifteen dash three zero zero nine. New construction of approximately thirty-eight hundred square feet of educational space on four hundred and twenty-five acres zoned agricultural residential with a previously approved planned development located at six twenty-seven Bill Rice Ranch Road. Bill Rice Ranch is the applicant, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think everybody in here is familiar with the location of this property, out Franklin Road. It's been there for quite some time. Uh, they have quite a number of activities that are approved out there on the property, uh, one of them being these are the educational use. Uh, they're actually proposing to add a, a new school building and they want to do it, and they want to do it in phases. Uh, this first phase here is, you can see right here, but they're proposing two additional phases at some point in the future. At that point, they'd have to come back to the planning commission because they're not looking for approval for all the three phases today. Uh, from a planning standpoint, uh, most of our comments have been addressed. One of the comments that, uh, we, we saw after looking at the plan, and this is a relatively minor comment, is the utility certifications need to be added onto the site plan. Uh, again, that, that's just something that wasn't added on the front end, but that's something that's easily remedied. Uh, I know Mr. Hughes has several comments that he'd like to make, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to him.
All right, go ahead to the Gray plan, please. Uh, they are providing a stormwater detention pond. Um, showing this location here, but, um, this is a dry detention pond and it doesn't quite meet our water quality regulations, so we'll need some enhancements to that. Um, either some kind of, uh, treatment drain or water quality inlet or something to provide the, the capture of the first inch or the eighty percent TSS removal rate. The dry pond just doesn't do it by itself, so we'll need them to enhance that. Um, we need to have them evaluate the next, uh, two downstream structures as it flows towards Franklin Road. Um, and we need to have them do some little tweaking. Uh, need some more grades in front of the, the pond. They added a pipe under Coontz Rodeo Drive, but they're not showing how the water from the pond is getting into this new pipe, so we need to have them add some, uh, grades for that. Um, and the parking lot's got a little steep place, we can have them tweak that a little bit right next to the handicap spots. The handicap spots themselves are ADA compliant, but just outside of that, it gets to be over five percent right in this area. And we, and if they could move this contour over a little bit, it would flatten it out and, uh, not be so steep. Um, and then we need a drainage map, an overall drainage map for the pond, uh, that wasn't included in the first of middle. But, these are things that we can work with, I believe. Uh, and they've got so much land out here, it's, it's not a problem with, uh, finding some room to do something, so. But other than that, we, we're okay.
Anyone representing, uh, Bill Rice Ranch here?
Morning Commissioners, my name's Rob Mulcham with S E C, um, Engineering. Um, we are in agreement with all staff's comments and conditions. Um, we think we can get through everything Mr. Hughes has spoken about this morning, we can work through the staff on getting those corrected and added to the plans, so.
Questions?
Well, my question might be to Mike, give us a little cliff note on dry pond.
Well, a, a dry pond just fills up when it rains and then dries and empties out over twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
What has to be done to that water to?
Well, it, um, dry ponds have an efficiency of sixty to sixty-five percent TSS, total suspended solid removal, that's the sediment that, that they can clean out of a pond, so they're gonna need an additional help to get that eighty percent, it, which is our goal, or they need to capture, capture that first one inch of rainfall in a location and have it infiltrate. So, this is pretty rocky ground, I don't think they'll be able to get it to infiltrate. Uh, so they'll need some kind of treatment drain, maybe a grass well downstream or something to work in conjunction with this pond. It can be done, it just, we need to see that. And, and the pond, the dry, the, excuse me, the dry pond by itself doesn't, doesn't meet our water quality standards, so it needs a little help.
The grass well, you can haul dirt in and make that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They can enhance something, just get a nice grass path where it'll, you know, help clean the waters as it goes downstream.
Is this, is this new, a new operation for them? I kind of understood that they had a school out there already, but.
No, it's not a new operation. It's more their, they've, over time, they've started to see the program expand. They've gotten more and more people coming to their summer camps and stuff like that, so they need more additional space to handle that.
Good. So this is Phase One, Phase Two and Three near future, like within the next year or so, or two years, or coming back?
First phase probably in two years before they pull you that bill. And after that, Phase Two would be probably three to four years. Phase Three would be any questions of when it would happen.
Those will come back, some of the additional site plans for approval on those.
All of the water issues that you've discussed, Mike, will, will be addressed for all three phases in preparation for all three phases?
Well, no, sir. This, this pond is mainly just for Phase One. That was one of our questions we had in the first round of comments, but this is just for that phase, so they'll need some additional work for the next phase coming, coming down the line, so.
The regulations may have evolved by the time they get to Phase Two.
That's true. They'll, they'll have to follow the current regulations at that time. They understand that.
Hey, Michael, looking at the topo map on C one one, it, it looks like you're, to the, to the south and the west of the property, you're, you're kind of at a, in a valley here. So is all that, is all that rainwater from the west and the south all draining towards this site?
Well, that's, that's one of my comments. I need a drainage map, a watershed map of what's coming to the pond. There, looks like a lot of this can be bypassed around the area. This is the proposed site right here, but looks like a little bit of a ridge right along this, right here.
And then you have it to, just to the right of that, you have a depression. I don't know if that's a sinkhole or if that's just.
Right in this area?
No, to, to, to the east, straight east, straight east of the site. You got it right here, right there.
Okay. This, I think, is, is outside their area. You talking about right in here? Okay, yeah. It's gonna be released right here. This is the Coontz Rodeo Drive and it'll, it's going this way, so we'll need to have them evaluate the next couple downstream crossings. There should be a drainage structure right here and then, looks like it gets in this little swell and goes to the north.
Okay.
So.
No, no sinkhole issues to anybody's knowledge?
I, I'm not aware of any that they've, they've shown on this topography, but I'm sure there, there could be some out there.
I don't think there's four hundred and twenty-five acres in Rutherford County without a leak.
Amen.
Not one there now, wait a couple weeks, they'll show up.
Okay.
But, but they, they have the room to do stuff and that's why I'm okay with it.
They, they have the room, they just don't have the, enough detail for you yet, okay?
Need a little more work on it.
All right. Based, based on that, I would recommend approval based on staff's, staff comments.
Second. Motion to approve in a second. Other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to publicly thank the Bill Rice Ranch for all of the work they've done in our community and throughout Middle Tennessee, and you're a great asset there, Rutherford County. Thank you. Item number nine B, True Gospel. The item number is fifteen dash three zero one one. New construction of three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five square feet of community assembly space, religious institution, owned three point six two acres, zoned RM, located along West Jefferson Pike. True Gospel Missionary Baptist Church is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I apologize, we're not gonna have that on the screen. I thought I had everything, but I guess that was one of the ones that we didn't get. But Mr. Hughes is gonna go ahead and pull it up on Google Earth. This property is located on the south side of West Jefferson Pike. The applicants are proposing to construct a new religious institution on the property. The proposed seating capacity is under one hundred and fifty persons, so this qualifies as a small community assembly, which is allowed by right in the RM zone under our zoning regulations. They do recognize that if they do expand over a hundred and fifty persons, as far as the seating capacity is concerned, that they will have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for any expansion needs beyond that. Anything over five hundred would be a rezoning request. We did have a number of comments on this particular site plan. They do need to show the location of the nearest fire hydrant. I do believe that was one of the things that was missing. Several of these comments really on here are really more with engineering. I'll let Mike talk about those in just a second. They are going to have to also, if they are, they are proposing some lighting on the property, really just wall packs, not so much in the parking area, but we will need to see a photometric plan on that. That's nothing that we can't handle from an administrative standpoint, but that is something that we will have to see just because they are proposing some lighting. Again, there are some engineering issues with this, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mike to let him discuss in more detail.
All right. Apologize, GIS wasn't working on this computer this morning, so I had to use Google Earth. But this is the location of the proposed church right here. This is Jefferson. I think this is Angie going to Wilson Elementary up here. And this is Mount Ari and, let's see, what's this one? East Fork Drive right here. So I have some concerns about the downstream drainage. The pond is proposed to go in this area right here and it will release, the, the current location where they're showing to it being released is right where this house is. There's not any downstream drainage easements, so I'm, I'm a little concerned about how, you know, even if they meet the water quality, water quantity calculations that we require, that it's water that had originally been sheet flow, shallow concentrated flow is now gonna be a point discharge coming right at this house. That's, that's my big concern. And then once it leaves, goes past this house, there's kind of a depression in this area that will have to build up in the back of these yards and build up and spill out. So I'm having some issues about, about that. And I just talked to Bill this morning. I didn't give him enough heads up. I'm on it, so we'll, we'll need to work through this, but I, like I said, I'm having a little heartburn about where the pond's getting released and, and where it goes from there, so.
Is there enough room on the lot for parking and?
Well, yes, they, they have the parking and, and they have, it's a good sized parcel. They, they are gonna be on a septic system. I think their soil's gonna be back in this higher area in the back, but it's where this pond is and the location of this house and, and the lack of drainage easements and whatnot. I'm, I'm just having a little, little heartburn over that.
Does the water already pool in those backyards at all?
Well, it does, but it's, it's coming from, off a field, a grass field that's sheet flow and, and maybe shallow concentrated, concentrated. So now we're gonna collect it in a pond and release it through a pipe, you know, an outlet structure and a pipe. So it's, it's, we need to have that evaluated a little bit better.
Well, whoever owns that house next door and I have to give them a consent to drain, will cross there.
Technically, if, if we're meeting pre versus post, we're, they're doing everything they, they can. I, I don't really like that we, we allow that without some kind of evaluation downstream, so I'll, I'll let Bill kind of answer.
Good morning, Chairman Phillips, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel Engineering. Engineers have heartburn, that's part of the job description. I have it too, all the time. No, seriously, we understand Mike's concerns and, and we'll address some, you know, we're showing the water right now going where it's always gone. And so what we can do is move that outlet southwest so it's not pointing, I think right now it's sort of pointing at, at that swimming pool. We can move it southwest so that that doesn't happen. We can even look at a smaller outlet structure and even do a larger pond and a deeper pond in order to hold more water on the site. There's plenty of room on this site. We're only developing the front part of it so we can, and we're already designing the pond where the outlet structure is above the bottom of the pond, so there's some water that's gonna be caught there anyway and not go out the outlet structure. What we can do is make it deeper to minimize the impact downstream. We're already holding water back so that what they see per unit of time is much less than what they would see after we develop. But we'll be happy to work with Mike and, and relieve the heartburn.
Bill, he's talking about the water coming out at one point. Is there a way engineering wise, where the water comes out at one point, spread it on this piece of property when, where it goes over on this gentleman's property's got the swimming pool, forces?
Yes, sir. There are ways to dissipate the energy and spread it out, a level spreader or something to, so it's not a, just a one point.
Yeah, when that, whenever it gets to grass and away from pipe, it'll slowly dig a, dig a trench across there or something, if it's not spread out or some riprap or something to slow it down.
Like Bill said, they do have the room, it's just we don't have it right in front of us right now, and I'm kind of worried about what happens downstream, so we need to have them look at that, too.
How about water from the east? I think it's east going back toward Walter Hill. Off those other lots, is that water going to these lots? Are we, is this a conveyance of water or is it just basically got the water's on that lot itself?
I think what they had, it was like five and a half acres, and it does come from like Mount Ari, this area right in here, and comes to this point. So they are taking some upstream area from these houses that's, that's coming towards them that they'll have to handle.
So we'll actually, might even improve a little bit of what's going on over there.
Yes, sir.
This, this is a, used by right, is, is what you just said, and so there was no notification given to any of the neighbors or?
I mean, beyond there, where we put our agendas online, everybody can access them in our, you know, our daytime and location notification we put in the paper every month. Nothing beyond that.
This isn't a rezoning, this is just a site plan?
Just a site plan, yes, sir.
Does staff feel like they can?
It's workable.
You guys feel like we could approve it, leave it in your hands, or?
Well, I, I need a lot of work with Bill and he does a good job, so we'll definitely work with him on it.
He's done two or three before, I think.
I think so. I just need that comfort level, you know, before I cut it loose.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff being satisfied.
Second. Motion to approve in a second. Other discussion, I, I think you've made several comments, staff made several comments, Doug, about numbers of people. So if, if this grows, what's, what happens?
All right, let me just pull my ordinance out here. I can make sure we're all on the same page.
And how do we know when it grows?
Well, their seating, what they're proposing for seating capacity on the site plan's a hundred and five, okay? Now, with a small community assembly, they can go up to, I think it's less than a hundred and fifty, so that'd be a hundred and forty-nine or less. When the seating capacity, if they want to expand and they come in with another site plan saying, okay, we're gonna expand our capacity to two hundred and fifty, we'll just throw that number out there. At that point, before they come back to you with the site plan, they'd have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a special exception for a medium community assembly. So if they're gonna be adding any kind of seats or anything like that, they're gonna have to, you know, submit revised plans to our office and that's when we would catch that.
So if they're running two hundred?
If they're running two hundred, yeah, if they're running two hundred, then that's, becomes a medium community assembly. Their seating.
But how do we know if they're running two hundred?
Well, we'll have to come tell us.
Sometimes churches set out chairs, they put them everywhere, you know?
Yeah, based on their seating capacity, what they're telling us right now it's a hundred and five. Of course, they'll, they'll be, you know, if they start getting to a point where they're creating, you know, possible fire or building code issues, you know, they'll have to remedy that. So, I mean, you're right, sometimes they have to put chairs out, but at some point they'll have to come to us and say, we, we want to expand more. I mean, is there a chance that that could happen without us knowing about it? I mean, quite frankly, yes. I mean, I'm not gonna be, I go to, you know, we go, we go somewhere else for church on Sunday, so I won't be, I can't go to every church facility in the county all the time. As fun as that would be, but I, I can't do that. But, but yeah, so at some point they're gonna have, it's self-policing, they're gonna have to come tell us at some point.
When they build a building, ask for building codes and they build it twice as big to hold a hundred and fifty, does that red flag it?
It could. I mean, if they decide to build, of course, they're, they're gonna be bound by what they're approved on the site plan anyway, but if they go out there and say, hey, we want to add another two thousand square feet to this, you know, we decided to go above and beyond that, that's gonna be, they'd have to revise their site plan at that point. We could catch it at that, at that point.
Five years down the road and they've got three hundred people that are attending that and they want to expand their building and, and is that site going to be big enough? And if it goes before BCA, do they have, can they say no?
Well, it's, I mean, the quick answer, can they say no? I mean, the answer is yes, they could. Now, they have to have reasonable grounds to do that. You know, if they meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance and everything's in order with it and they just say no for reasons outside of that, you know, there, there's the possibility of some, some legal recourse. But if they bring it in and they're, they're in order and they can, they prove that they meet all the conditions of the zoning ordinance, there's really no reason they should say no.
Thank you. You have a motion to approve in a second, right, Gail?
Yes.
Any other comments? Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine C, Verizon Wireless Tennessee Partnership. The item number is fifteen dash three zero zero seven. New construction of one hundred and seventy, of a one hundred and seventy foot, one hundred and eighty feet with lightning rod, wireless communication tower and accessory buildings on eight point eight five acres, zoned commercial services located at eight oh two West Jefferson Pike. Wireless Verizon Tennessee Partnership is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Sorry for the mouthful on, on that particular item. This property is located along West Jefferson Pike. You'll probably recognize the location of it. It's right there where the existing mini warehouse facility is, that's on, it's actually on the same property. This was approved at one point for Phase Two. That property was for those, expansion of the mini warehouse, but at this point, it looks like they're gonna go this particular route with this. What they're proposing to do is use some of that remaining area for this cell tower. This has gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals, went just this past month, well, this month really, April, like just a few weeks ago, and was approved. Really, just a, a few items, really just having to deal with structural analysis, their feed lines and things like that, nothing of real, any major consequence or anything. This was, again, the item that was brought, that was placed on the agenda a little late. This was submitted properly, it's just staff neglected to put it onto the agenda through a mistake, what it boiled down to it. But staff did have a number of concerns as far as staff comments go. Nothing that I would consider really, anything that would prohibit this from being moved forward today. Most of the things, I've talked to Mr. Jim Lapin, he's here today representing the applicant. Most of these items, he said, have already been addressed. They're working on getting the revised plans to us, but nothing on here that's, that really causes me any major concern. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. And again, the applicant is present, if you have questions for him.
What's the height requirement? What's, what's the maximum height?
For any tower? There really isn't a maximum height as far as we're concerned.
Really?
Yeah, it's, now, one of the requirements is that, you know, they have to be set back far enough so that if the tower were to fall straight, it would fall on the property. Most of them aren't engineered that way anymore. Most of them are engineered that they collapse in on themselves. The technology that we've seen, and, and Mr. Lapin may be able to speak more to this, we don't see a lot of the larger towers anymore. Most of the ones we see anymore are under two hundred feet because of the way the technology is, is evolving, really. More and more sites, we're seeing they're smaller just because they're, they have to be closer together because of the amount of data that's being with smartphones and everything. The taller ones don't do as much good, you need more smaller towers around. That's what we've been seeing. Also, I think two hundred's the magic number as far as FAA requirements are concerned for tower lighting and all that, so most of the ones we see are right under that, or like this one's only a hundred and seventy feet.
I was thinking there's a couple of airports out that way, out Jefferson Pike. As far as they're concerned, landing and taking off and all that sort of stuff, I guess they're on their own accord there.
Right, and you know, they have to get evaluation from the FAA and everything, you know, prior to actually doing all this anyway, so I mean, those are things that they, that they look at. But again, Mr. Lapin may be able to speak a little bit more to that.
Doug, do they all have these little shelter, these little shelters?
Pretty much, yes, ma'am. That's for all the equipment and electronics and things like that. Now, this, of course, this, all of our, the towers in Rutherford County, they're all required to be able to co-locate about three other, you know, antenna on there. So this is just one shelter. You'll see over time, you'll see like two or, two or three other shelters. Chances are those won't come before you just because they're co-locations and they're so small that, you know, we can handle them administratively. But before this is all said and done, you'll probably see two or three more of those little shelters out there.
Do you have some comments?
Yes, hi, my name is Jim Lapin. I, I work with Falcon Foster and I'm here today on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I just wanted to comment on your question. We have requested a review by the Federal Aviation Commission on this particular tower, and we did receive in a statement of no hazard. So they have evaluated it and they have determined that it's no hazard to aviation.
Okay.
And, and as Doug mentioned, that two hundred feet is the, is the magic. And, and, and as Doug mentioned, that, uh, two hundred feet is the, um, is the magic, uh, number for lighting. So, and, and those lighted towers are not as popular amongst people in the area, and, uh, we typically would stay below that. And, uh, this is a capacity site, as Doug mentioned, there are many lower towers closer together, uh, that are, that is kind of the trend in, in this. Uh, but, uh, the, the, um, height of these is determined by the radio frequency engineers at Verizon. They, uh, do an evaluation of, uh, what is needed in that particular area for our network, and they come up with a particular height, uh, that is the proper height. And then we, um, in our, in Falcon Foster, try to make sure that they can get to that height, and, uh, that's why they, we've established this height on this tower.
So if I understand you, creating anything under two hundred feet, you don't light?
That's correct, that's correct. There's no requirement for lighting under two hundred feet, so, yep. And we do allow room within our, um, fenced-in areas for those compounds that you had mentioned, for the co-locators. There is definitely room, and set, set forth on our plans, um, the room for those additional compounds and how they would hook up to the, to this tower. We're, we're hoping that we get some renters.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, this being just a site plan, and they've already got the approval for the use of the BCA, whether, was there any opposition? This is a pretty good spot, in my opinion. It's in a spot that's on commercial, it's not residential houses right up against it. That's when we get most of our problems, and I like to see them separated a little bit if we can, so. Then I'll make a motion to approve, subject to any staff comments.
I second it.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? The motion carries, thank you. Item nine, um, we're gonna, uh, talk about retreats again, but before we do, I think there's a couple of members that might have to leave before this discussion is over. And I'll remind everyone that our next meeting is scheduled for the eleventh of May at six PM over at the courthouse. And then our, uh, nine AM meeting, uh, was originally on our calendar for Monday, the twenty-fifth, which is Memorial Day, I believe. And we've rescheduled that for Tuesday following, which would be the twenty-sixth.
That's great.
So we mark that on your calendars for, our nine AM meeting will be Tuesday, the twenty-sixth of May at nine AM here in the planning mess.
Yes, sir. And if, before we get on to the retreat discussion, if I could just bring up one other item, just, I was gonna consider this under other business, but since a couple of them may have to leave, we'll go ahead and take care of it now. Uh, just wanted to, just briefly, just kind of give you an update on our discussions with the traffic sheds, and, uh, kind of what the progress is on that. Uh, you know, we've been in contact with Mr. Tocnel a number of times over the last few weeks. He's actually planning a trip up here, again, uh, the same day of our night meeting for the Planning Commission. Uh, he's working on some, another case study and everything from Williamson County. I know there's been some interest in that, kind of a real-world, uh, application of the regulations as, as they apply in, in Williamson County. Uh, what he'd like to do is come up here and be able to kind of present that, and also to talk with the developers, and basically anybody who's interested in, in kind of hearing about it. So what we thought we might do is, and we want to get your guidance on that, what we've kind of pitched to him was, well, maybe, uh, prior to our Planning Commission meeting, maybe at like three o'clock in the afternoon, we could meet here. And the Planning Commission could be here, anybody from the public that wanted to come, you know, we invite them as well, where Mr. Tocnel could kind of go through that. And then after, you know, that meeting's over, that still gives us a little time, if you guys want to go grab some dinner or something like that prior to the Planning Commission meeting, then we could do that, then have our regular Planning Commission meeting. We'll have two items, I think, on the agenda. If this go, if we put the retreats back on there, we'll have two. If not, we'll just have one rezoning request. Uh, but that would, uh, allow, I think, kind of the maximum, uh, use of his time, I think. He wouldn't actually come to the Planning Commission meeting to, to present anything. It would kind of be a work session prior to our regular meeting. Uh, so I just wanted to kind of fill that out there for y'all's consideration, just to see what you thought about that. Think that would work okay, or if you want to try to schedule something a little different, or however.
That's May eleventh?
I believe that's correct.
I know a lot of folks have jobs and things, and, um, I'd kind of like to leave it like it is. And, uh, you could also, at the commission meeting, uh, that night, um, ask, uh, questions and those types of things. But I'd kind of like to leave it like it is, so we can have some public input and, and that afternoon, uh, unless there's some real objections to it. I know, once again, some folks have jobs and would have a difficult time making that three o'clock meeting, uh, and then staying over for a six o'clock meeting. So, uh, I'd like, kind of like to leave it like it is, and, and as many of us can be present, let's be there if we can't.
Do it after the regular meeting.
No, just, just.
Move right into it.
Yeah.
Was he wanting to head home? Was that part of the idea in having it earlier?
I, I don't think that was really the discussion. We just thought it might, considering what happened at the last meeting, when we had a training session afterward. I think that's kind of how I was looking at it, when, uh, you know, we thought there was gonna be an item, it wasn't gonna take much time, it took longer than we thought, which, you know, it happens, it's fine. But, you know, I didn't want him to be in a position where, you know, it's seven thirty, eight o'clock, everybody's exhausted, and they don't want to really hear anymore. That, that's kind of where we were coming at it from. But whatever he wanted to do is fine.
The, the, the discussion is, should we move it back till four thirty or so?
Well, I mean, we could, I mean, the reason we pitched three o'clock originally was just in case somebody wanted to grab a bite to eat prior to the Planning Commission meeting, was, that was kind of our thought.
We could start at five o'clock, with the official meeting starting at six, allow an hour.
Okay.
Him to talk to, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, but the people are gonna be affected as much as, more than anybody, it's gonna be your engineers and your developers, and that is their job. You know, you've got some farmers and landowners out there, they're gonna be, so, but, you know, we could do something at five, and if he was safe for the meeting, you know, part of the meeting, and that, if anybody wanted, he could be available at six also, but.
We could, I'll, I'll, but we're gonna talk to him tomorrow, so we'll, we'll pitch that to him and see what he thinks. Again, that, that, the reason we did that was just a little time between the two meetings, but at five o'clock, that still may give folks a little time to grab a quick bite.
In my opinion, traffic shed's gonna be a very heated discussion if we can move forward with it. There's a lot of people have reached out to me that are in the development business, or property owners, whatever, and are very concerned about this and stuff. So if we want to seriously consider it, I think it's gonna have to have a lot of discussion.
Yes, and agreed. And just so everybody understands, at this point, we're still in the talking phases, you know, we're not, we're not proposing we implement these, we're just seeing if it would work. Would it work in Rutherford County, and if so, where would it work? That's really all we're looking at at this point. Uh, again, if we decide to move forward with this, we're gonna have to put it out there for bid, so at this point, it's just still preliminary study, so.
Well, if we've only got one rezoning, too, I mean, it's not gonna be as long as it was the other night, where we had, you know, we were pretty wore out after.
Well, yeah, but this item, if we consider it and we're okay with it, this may be on the agenda again, so we'll just, we'll see where we go when we have our discussion here in just a few minutes.
Five o'clock, see if you can do five o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Is it okay with everyone?
Thanks, Doug, for bringing that up. Sure, thank you.
Doug, when is the Power of Ten Conference? Isn't that coming up?
Yes, ma'am, I think it is. I want to say, I, I'll have to get back with you on the date exactly. For some reason, I thought it was at the very beginning of June, but I could be wrong about that. I haven't got the official invitation yet, so, but I'll, I'll look into that and let you all know.
Okay, uh, anything else? Staff reports, Doug?
Uh, no, that was it, listen, Mike.
Zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Regarding retreats.
Yes, sir. We're continuing the discussion on our retreats. Uh, we sent you some, uh, some draft amendments, uh, late last week. And, uh, this is what we have, you should have a copy on your tables, but I also have it on the screen here if you want to take a look at it. We haven't made just a lot of changes, of course, because I wanted to get your take on a few things, but some of the things we did do, um, we added something on here under the application phase of it. Just the size of the proposed facility, including a floor plan showing assembly area and other areas, to kind of give us a better idea of how much of the structure they would actually use for the assembly. If there's gonna be like areas for food, food preparation, bathrooms, those kind of things, we kind of would like to know that on the front end. Um, one of the questions also that we had centered around what exactly, what, what was an event. Uh, we did a little research on that, and found a definition, uh, that I adapted out of, uh, it was from, uh, Butte County, Cali, um, California, excuse me. And this isn't word for word what they said, it's pretty close, but I left several things out that they had, I, I thought kind of confused things, and I kind of just adapted the wording a little bit. But we would define an event as any celebration, ceremony, wedding, reception, et cetera, et cetera, for the benefit of someone other than the property owner that takes place on a periodic basis, involving the gathering of individuals assembled for the common purpose of said celebration, wedding, et cetera. Uh, we also said, does not include uses that are accessory to a single-family residential use, such as private parties, gatherings, and similar activities. Want to make sure that we didn't, uh, put that in there, uh, include that in there with everything else. So that is how we're proposing at this point, to identify what is actually considered an event. Speaking with my cohorts in Williamson County, I know there were some questions about, is a wedding and a reception count as one event or two different events? Essentially, the way they regulate it, if it's, like, the wedding and the reception immediately follows, they would consider that one event. But if they had, for instance, if they had like the rehearsal dinner on Friday night, then they had the wedding somewhere else, and they came back for the reception, that would be two events, is how that would work. So if it's kind of combined into one, you know, one right after the other, they would say one event, if not, it'd be two different ones. Which is kind of, I kind of like the way that, that is, I think that's more, I think that's fair, and I think it's more consistent and easier to enforce, quite frankly, than trying to say, okay, does one event encompass two or three different things, or, you know, over two or three days, or is it like every day a separate event, which is really more the case, I think, is what they were doing. There was also a lot of discussion about the size of structures, and, hold on, I thought I, let me open up a different one here, I thought I had, uh, opened up the correct one here. Yeah, I thought I had one, oh, here it is, that's the one I wanted. This is the same thing, it's just everything was combined in this file, here we go. Uh, there was some, uh, discussion about the, the size of structure versus the, the lot size of what's permitted. Uh, we used the five percent calculation here, and this is what would be allowed at five acres, ten, twenty-five, fifty, all the way up to five hundred acres, which I don't think we'll see many of those. But, uh, this is, kind of gives you an idea if you want five percent, two and a half percent, or even down to one percent. Uh, I think there was some discussion maybe about lowering that to one percent, and these, I don't think are unfair numbers by any means, I think that's something to definitely consider. Uh, Mr. Jones in our codes department, he's, yeah, he's still here, uh, he provided some information to us, and, uh, Mr. Farley as well, our, our fire chief, about the International Building Code. Uh, I'll let him speak more to this, I don't want to, to, to misstate anything. But, uh, basically, this is anything five thousand square feet, or has a higher occupancy load than a hundred, would require sprinklers in the facility. So that's some of the information, I think, that, uh, we were asked to, to look into, so we've, we've done that. So we just wanted to kind of present this to you, and kind of see where the discussion went from here.
There's a little highlighted area, and I think it's, uh, under I, uh, about sound amplification.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. I, I liked that, yes. Uh, one of the other questions, of course, dealt with hours of operation and sound amplification, those kind of things. Most of the ordinance I look at seem to use ten PM as the cutoff. I don't know if there's any real rhyme or reason to that, but most of the ones I've looked at says anything beyond that, ten o'clock. I have seen some ordinances that cut it off at about eight o'clock, I've seen some that do have hours of operation. Most of the ones I've looked at really don't regulate the hours necessarily. Um, I think they leave that more on a case-by-case basis, which frankly, I would feel more comfortable with, rather than say, everybody's, has to do between these hours. But I think putting some sort of an amplification or lighting cutoff, I think is reasonable. You know, anything after, I mean, ten o'clock could be, it could be nine o'clock, I mean, and that, there's no, again, no rhyme or reason to that, it's just, uh, that seems to be the, the number that most of them go with.
The, uh, sound amplification and outdoor lighting cease no later than ten PM. But if there were still a party going on indoors without s- sound amplification and lighting indoors would still be permitted?
That'd be correct.
What if the sound doesn't bother anybody? I mean, after ten o'clock. I mean, this, uh, sound amplification and outdoor lighting should cease no later than ten o'clock. What if no one is bothered by the sound? We had talked about nuisance sound, and, you know, I, I've mentioned, that's hard to measure.
Yeah, the way this is written, it sounds a little harsh. I, I, I don't, uh, the intent to me would not be, you have to turn everything off at ten o'clock, it just has to not be a nuisance.
Well, any sound amplification would be music, right? Uh, you got speakers.
Well, music, microphone, you know, somebody talking on a mic.
Cause the car door's open and the radio on, that's sound amplification. You probably need to have some decibel levels or something like that.
Well, and the decibel, we use, we, we have decibel levels in our ordinance already. I mean, the, the, the one, I, well, this particular section here, section eleven oh-six, our performance standards, that they're already in there, so that, that's what that's referring to.
And even, even as I read that, it also, to me, it reads, you also have to flip the light switch on it, off at ten o'clock.
Oh, the outdoor lighting.
I mean, I'm okay with subtle outdoor lighting, I just wouldn't want, like, football field, baseball field type of lighting going past.
Well, right, and I understand that. Of course, you know, there are lighting standards and the performance standards as well, as far as, you know, lighting plans and those kind of things. I mean, if that's what you're comfortable with, then there was really no reason to put anything in there beyond the end of, you know, section eleven oh-one, eleven oh-six of this ordinance period.
Eleven six and stop it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we had proposed originally. Now, something to keep in mind, and, and to, you know, Charlotte, to your point, uh, you know, it may not bother anybody, maybe it doesn't bother anybody right now, but what happens in two, three years when different people move out and other people move in, all of a sudden it bothers them.
Right, the, the way it's stated, it, it just seems like, okay, at ten o'clock, you gotta turn everything off. Um, you know, if, if the sound is not bothering the neighbors, and the light are not bothering the neighbors, you know, I guess it's the wording that's bothering me, the section eleven oh-six, I guess.
I guess my thought on that is, that's gonna vary site to site.
Right.
Because it's gonna vary neighbor to neighbor. So I actually like how it's worded, because it's black and white, there's no vague, there's no interpretation of nuisance or anything else, it just, that's the rule.
So, you're saying, just take this part out and just leave it?
I like that it's clean-cut, I like leaving.
Oh, you like this part in here, okay, I'm sorry.
You got two that wanted that, one that wants the answer.
As long as we refer to section eleven oh-six that have the standards, uh, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, regardless of what this says, the codes department's not gonna be out there with a watch.
Right.
And if the neighbors are fine with it, they're not calling anybody.
Well, that's true.
And so it goes on.
Yeah, I mean, it gives us a vehicle, if somebody does complain, we can go out there and say, okay, you're, it's ten o'clock, you need to turn off the light, you don't have to.
But if the neighbors are all good with it, then, I don't think David Jones is riding around at nine fifty-nine at night looking for lights and music, you know? He may be there singing or something, but, and well, this, this would be enforced by codes.
Yes, sir.
Codes doesn't work at ten o'clock at night, so how do you get around that one?
Well, I mean, it might be a situation where if we start getting specific complaints, I, I mean, we may have to make a special, you know, after-hour trip, you know, to see.
Doug, I think you hit it on the nail on the head when you said it gives us a vehicle if we need it, and otherwise, the neighbors probably make care of it.
It's like a lot of other ordinances, uh, we don't ride around looking for yards that have three or four junk cars in them, you know, usually what happens in an ordinance like that is we get a complaint, and then we investigate it. That's what, that's usually what happens. And self policing, I think Will made that comment last meeting, uh, that, that's usually the way that that works. If neighbors are okay with it, you don't get any complaints, but if they're not, you start getting complaints, and then that's when we have to get involved in it, or should get involved in it. And, and s- some other neighbors can be very creative, you know? If their piece is being disturbed, some neighborhoods will get big amplification and blast right back at them, where they can't hear what's going on in their wedding. So, uh, you know, it kind of works both ways, too. So there, there are some situations, I think, that, uh, may get a little bit out of hand, but I doubt very seriously that most of these folks are going to, gonna create issues for us. When we talked early on, we were concerned about, uh, concerts, maybe going in at some of these places, and even the, what, what's, what's one particular event? You know, if, if you have a concert going on for three different nights, it would be three different events, that kind of thing, so. It, it's, it's an, uh, I, I kind of like the way this is, uh, uh, concerts and stuff would, some music at a wedding or something would cease at a particular time, and, uh, I kind of like that. I, I, I just, before we got into this, I just didn't realize kind of how this was really kind of going on, but I was, uh, coming home from the Smithville, uh, area, and, uh, down Last Cassis Pike, and out in somewhere close to Milton, there was, I think it was where Ronnie Oat used to live, out in that area. It was a big barn that was sitting out there in a wedding.
Yeah.
And I never saw it, anything, there anything, but hay going on there, you know, so this is really happening.
And they're doing, for every prom, they've had a thing out there, yeah.
They're busy all the time.
We, we have four out in Last Cassis, probably one of them's eight hundred feet from, I walked in the door.
the door Saturday night, pardon me, and I could hear the music, but it didn't bother me, once I was in the house, and I know the closer neighbors to, to them, and nobody's bothered with it, you know, usually. And it'll, it'll become self policing, and this gives us a vehicle to do that self policing, if they don't self police, you know.
Kind of like when we did have conditional use permits, if someone had complained, then you could call them in and say, you had specific standards, knock it off, well, this gives us a specific standard, so.
Most of those owners are gonna do it themselves, most of them are, most all of them are. Some, some of those situations like might be happening, I think the people from Wilson County that spoke the other night, it would probably really be an exception, but most of these things are small, and they're celebrations, you know, they're, they're really appropriate under the circumstances around them.
Bringing them up, they've been on my mind a lot as we've been talking about this, and they were saying that the five acres was entirely too small, and, and we had it bigger, and then we dropped it down because we thought the 10 acres was too big. As you were looking at any of the other ordinances, did you see any, any sort of recurring number?
Not necessarily recurring number, I will say, this is probably one of the smallest ones. The one, of course, we patterned a lot of what we did off of Williamson Counties, their regulations, they had two levels, one of their minimum was 20 acres, and it seems like the other one's 15, so even 10 acres was less than what some of the other ones we had seen. So when you guys asked us to go down to five, which, you know, it's fine, you know, we're, we're kind of, the ones we've looked at at least, we're, we're a little low in that regard.
I was concerned that that number's too low, because I know, you know, my dad built a house on a five acre tract that was wide open and flat, and when I think about his neighbor, you know, being right next door to him, I mean, everybody's in the party, you know, it's all, because there's nothing, there's no buffer, there's nothing, and, you know, maybe the buffers would take care of some of that.
Well, yeah, and I was just thinking, with the buffer requirements and the setbacks, I mean, that's gonna be, depending on the side, we talked about that, you know, if you have an irregular shaped lot, it may be difficult for a five acre tract to actually have a use like this, once you start looking at parking requirements, soils, areas, all those different things, it may be, from a practical standpoint, that you're looking at at least having to have like seven to 10 acres before it really works. So, I mean, it can work with five, it can, it won't be the largest facility in the world, and it won't have a whole lot of room for parking, but, you know, it could work.
I'd just like to hear what anybody else thinks about the track size, and then I have one more question for that.
In my opinion, it's easier to start with larger tracks and work your way down, because once you start with smaller tracks, those people are in business and grandfathered, if you find out five acre tracks don't work, you can take that off the book, but you may have a half a dozen that are already in existence and stuff, so, I would think we would want to think about it very seriously, what we approve, because it's easy enough if you start off with 10, or whatever, and, you know, two years down the road, you realize you won't go down to five, that's easy, opens the door for more, but when, but when you start taking rights away, then that gets harder to do.
Could you do it by special, could you start with the larger and then do it by special exception?
Well, we're doing it all by special exception now, I mean, yeah, I mean, you could do it kind of like we're proposing, if it's gonna be below a certain size, then it has to be a PUD, such as we're proposing for the number of events, you know, we could change that to say if it's gonna be less than 10 acres or more than 30 events, has to be a PUD application as opposed to a board of zoning appeal application, you could do that if you want to, we would still go by these same standards, but you could, I mean, that's an option.
Personally, I, I think the five acres is fine, your setback, you can have 100 acres, but if your setbacks are what they are, you put the building wherever you want it. So, and, and the lots are not gonna be perfectly circular, they're gonna be long, narrow, if it's 200 acres, setbacks is what controls the noise than the distance from people, so. And I know some of these that we've looked at, the lady, the gentleman came in-
On Beasley or Brinkley?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was two acres, and they got a nice setup.
Nice setup, but I went by that place, and I can see one of the neighbors a little irritated, that, that, sound and lighting, you know, I mean, it's right there in houses all the way around it, you know, it's right in the middle of everything.
But if they keep the sound not outside, keep it inside that building, the decibels you go by, sound amplification, people are gonna be bothered at 8 o'clock if it's outside.
I don't have any problem with you raising it, as long as you had the vehicle to let somebody in a particular circumstance apply for a smaller, you know, as long as they could get it on a smaller track after we looked at it, or BZA, whoever looked at it.
And we do, that, that's already-
That's already there, so if you wanna raise it, as long as it's understood, you can apply.
Yeah, the thing is, now they'd have to ask for a variance to that, if they wanted to go less than five acres, you know, as part of their application to the board of zoning appeals, they'd have to ask for a variance to that provision. It's, I mean, that works, I don't know if that's necessarily ideal, because, you know, the board has to have good reasons for granting a variance, and if they just start granting them for, you know, they grant one, then the next person comes in, well, you granted this one, how come you're not granting me, you know, I don't want to get in that type of situation, so.
You know, I, I think we all agree that wed, a place for weddings and Cub Scout meetings is what we need in a rural area, however, I have to play the devil's advocate a lot, and think about the guy who's always looking for a loophole, instead of being in the city in a commercial zone or an industrial zone where he really belongs, he wants to come out on a five acre track somewhere just outside of town, take advantage of this and open up a frat house for, for parties, and I don't want that next door to me, you know, five acres, to me, is, is too tight to put up a, be able to put up a 5,000 foot party house and have a band every Friday night, or most Friday nights anyway. I kind of like the larger, the larger sites myself.
I agree, did, did, what you, I'm thinking wedding chapels and small venues and little cabins to put people in, and you bringing that up, and I don't know what, I don't know how you-
If a guy lives on site, I think the party is gonna be somewhat restricted and controlled, but if he's an absentee owner who's just running a business here and-
He lives in Kentucky.
Cash you the check.
Says, I'll, I'll solicit every fraternity in town, and we can start having our parties here on weekends.
Well, are you comfortable with, I mean, if you want, what we can do is kind of what we talked about, we can raise that to 10 acres, and then we could say, if you're gonna have more than 30 events, or if your property's gonna be less than 10 acres, go the planned development route, because that would all come back to this body, that wouldn't go to the board of zoning appeals at that point, is that-
What's the cost that the applicant would be coming, just like we are, are having to come with a PUD, how much more cost does that involve?
Well, just application wise, the difference is $200, board of zoning appeal application for a special exception's 300, and rezoning application is 500. Now, that being said, there's a lot more prep, preparation work involved with getting a planned development together, there's a lot of regulations for planned developments, a lot of information we want to see on the front end, so there may be more costs in that regard, you know, for them, just getting their application together, but some of that information would be the same things we still need to see at the board of zoning appeals, so there would be some overlap, but I would probably say that the planned development route probably be a little more, there'd be more cost on that end than there would be on just a special exception.
They haven't worked?
Perhaps, I, I mean, most of the planned developments-
This list?
Sir?
This list?
Yes, I mean, regardless, if they go, whatever way they go, they're gonna have to do that list.
Yeah.
Some of that they can do themselves, now, I mean, eventually, they're, they are gonna have to do a site plan, I mean, that is required in these regulations anyway, but typically on a planned development, we require a lot more detail on the front end, like those pattern books you see, you know, whenever we see large developments, now, are they gonna be quite that involved, you know, maybe, maybe not, but, but, you know, there is gonna have to be, they're still gonna have to meet those requirements of the PUD section of the ordinance, so there, I think there will be a little more homework for them to do, which at the same time may work to our advantage at the standpoint of, you know, the people that are gonna pursue that are gonna be more serious about it, you know, if they know they're gonna have to sink that kind of time and effort and money into it before, before even coming to the planning commission, they may think twice about even applying, they may look and say, well, maybe we need to find a different piece of property that might work a little better than this one, I mean, that's, you know, that's one of the reasons we look at that, too.
I was thinking the same thing, it's like you've got Johnny Dreamer out there who doesn't realize this is a business, and there's actually, you know, specific work that goes into it, and if there is, and he wants that planned unit development, and his property is, you know, completely suited for it, otherwise than just that acreage, then, you know, he'll get serious and he'll proceed, so I, I like taking it to the 10. And then, did you need a decision from us on the chart you've got up, the-
I, I think so, because that'll help us as far as what the restrictions are for that. I mean, this, like I said, this gives you an idea, 5%, 2.5%, we can do others if this isn't enough, but-
I know we changed a few years ago the amount of accessory structure you can build, in like five acres, a 2,400 foot building or something like that.
Yeah, the way it is now, it's up to one acre of land, you can do 2,000 square feet of detached accessory space, beyond that, it's 5% of the lot, which, that, that, this is what this is, right?
That building's already allowed to be built out there, and stuff, so, I would hope those two would somewhat mirror one another, although this number could get out of control really fast, but I don't think anybody's got 500 acres out there, but, but they can build that building by right to that size already, you know.
Right, well, I mean, they can build an accessory, now, if they start wanting to use it for-
No, it could be, yeah, yeah, because a lot of these are souped up barns, I would call them, or something like that, you know, they fixed up a shop building or whatever, hang some lights and stuff, and they're in business, but, you know.
And, and just to be clear, those are maximum numbers, not minimum?
Those are maximum, yes, sir.
Doug, do we need to have another public hearing?
Yes, we've, I think we've made enough changes at this point, that, that we want to bring it back.
Well, I like the 1% and Will likes the 5%, so we could go with the 2.5%.
I just know somebody can build a 2,400 foot building or whatever, and on so many acres, and they, and if it's already sitting there, but-
Well, if you think about it this way-
They could not utilize all the building.
Right, if they're going 2.5%, let's just say for a five acre tract, they could build up to this, they would still be able to build up to 5% for just general accessory structures beyond that, I mean, this would count as part of that overall total, but they would still have, if they wanted to put like a two car garage, or like a Dutch barn or something like that, they could still have some room to do that.
Let me bring this point up, I went to one of those retreats in the last, or those venues on Last Cassus Pike a week or two ago, and it's the one that has that huge red barn sitting closest to Last Cassus. Well, I'm sorry, yeah, behind that is another huge shed, I mean, a huge shed, but it is all just full of equipment, I mean, it's full of tables, chairs, pretty decorative things for wedding, I mean, there, it's not for use, so does that count, i- is that count against them, or?
Well, this is just for the venue itself, is what we're looking at.
This is for housing people?
Right.
Okay.
Now, beyond that, they have a second structure where they're putting tables and chairs, I mean, to me, that would just be another accessory-
Okay, okay.
-building, myself.
Then your accessory could be larger than your primary?
Yes, I mean, that, that's currently the way it is, yes. Well, and the reason that, because we, there's so many people out there that, especially on large acreage tracks, you know, they may have a 1,500, 2,000 square foot house, but then they want to build a 40 by 60, you know, garage, barn, whatever you want to call it, where they tinker and do all their things, so, I mean, that's, that's just, it's not, I think that's, I think at one point in the past, the county did have a limitation based on the square footage of the house, or the, the footprint of the house, but, I mean, quite frankly, the, the BZA was granting variances of that left and right, I mean, it was to the point where if you're not gonna uphold the ordinance, why even have the regulation? So, that's why we changed it, and we've changed it, that's probably the one regulation, accessory building sizes for detached structures that's probably changed the most even since I've been here, we've gone through two or three different iterations of that. The one we have now seems to be working pretty well, because, I mean, it really, when you're using 5% a lot area, I mean, you're not gonna get many people that are gonna build that big of a structure, I mean, they're just not, so they're, they're keeping it within the limits that they've got.
So am I hearing a proposal of 10 acres and 2.5%?
I think so. I mean, because that gives you roughly 1,000 square feet per acre, that's kind of how that averages out a little bit.
There'll be a number of variants that request for under 10 acres, but, but some of the guidelines, you know, that under five acres and things like that may be appropriate for a couple of kind of meetings, but maybe not for some of the, just like the guy that, you know, they had the, that spoke, and he had like a couple of acres, that type of thing, and I, I was sympathetic with little church meetings and Cub Scout meetings and Boy Scout meetings and those kinds of things, but wasn't real sympathetic with all the, with a large, a larger type of wedding or something.
Right, and, and I think the type of, those are the kind of events we're really looking at, you know, if, if you have a little structure like that, and your child is in a Cub Scout group, Boy Scout, Girl Scout, whatever, and you have little things at your house, I mean, that's not really what we're going for, you know, or if you have your Sunday school over, and you have a large Sunday school class, and that's not really what we're trying to, to regulate. It's what you said, you know, the, you don't have any kids in Boy Scouts, but they want to use your facility for something, or somebody wants to get married there, or another church just wants to come, right, yeah, so that, that's why we, that definition that we put in there for event, that's, that's why we kind of put that in there, just to give them an idea, you know, we're not trying to regulate somebody that wants to have a personal event at their house, it's anything above and beyond that.
Bonnaroo.
What's that?
Bonnaroo.
Exactly, yes.
Got 10,000 friends.
Right, yeah, yeah, they're all my buddies, every one of them, yeah.
So-
I have one more question.
10 acres, 2.5%, is that what you're gonna-
Yes, that's what we'll change this to, then.
The first bullet under number one, where you've got the size of proposed facility including floor plan showing the assembly area and other areas, is that basically a site plan?
It, it's really more of a, it's not so much a site plan, but we're looking more at, that, that's the building plan itself, that, yeah, that, or just like a, a rough drawing, I mean, we're gonna have, you know, the building itself's gonna be, you know, 2,000 square feet, the assembly area is gonna be this amount, restroom areas will be over here, this amount.
But some kind of visual, I was just trying to understand what that is.
Right, right, yeah, it's more of a visual.
That, that would give us idea, if, you know, if we need to have the building sprinkled or other things like that, just life safety issues.
It's just a visual aid, not necessarily a site plan.
Right, right.
Doug, let me ask this, if I wanted to build a log cabin in the hills, rent it out on Verbo like I do now, does it come under this?
If you want to build a log-
It's not, it's not, it's not a wedding chapel, it's not a-
You mean, just kind of like a bed and breakfast type facility, something like that? It wouldn't fall under this, we have separate regulations for bed and breakfast in the zoning ordinance, it would fall under that. Because you're not, like you said, you're not really having events there, so this is, it's a little different situation, bed and breakfasts are separate.
More than 30 events a year.
Right, yeah, I mean, yeah, bed and breakfasts, you know, again, they're, they're regulated differently on the zoning ordinance, there's, there's a special exception for that, so it wouldn't, this wouldn't apply to that.
They're not tied to an event number?
Correct, right, right.
Do you need a motion, or are we just-
I think at this point, we know where you're wanting to go with it, so we'll go ahead and put this on our next evening agenda.
Very good, it'll, we'll have another public hearing at 6 o'clock on the 11th, is it?
Yes, sir.
It'll be a piece of cake now.
That's what I thought last time. No, I don't have anything further.
I'd like to recognize Pettis Reed, a former, former planning commissioner and current county commissioner, can't get enough of this place, and good, good to see you back here, Pettis. Anything else?
I would like to make just one quick announcement, I must want to give some kudos to one of our staff planners, Eric McMillan, he's our GIS planner, he's involved in an